Tammy Blake. Tammy, are you there? Hopefully she'll join us. Cindy Brode? Julia Tomarki-Pukura? Mr. Harley?
Here.
Mr. Kerr?
President.
Dr. Reed?
Here.
Dr. Schaefer?
Here.
Mr. Shropp?
Here.
Okay, thank you all. I apologize for our late, late start, but we were talking about some security issues that are of concern to all of us. There's no board president's message. Superintendent's message tonight?
I'll make it brief, sir. In the next several days, we will be communicating with our families, some back-to-school information, important updates as we're starting to get ready for the return of teachers on the 17th. So at their next outreach community meeting, we'll make sure the board's aware of that and the community's aware of that. And secondly, on this Monday, I'm sorry, on August 10th, Wednesday, we have a mental health symposium. And what we're doing there, sir, is we have some outside experts from the area come in and provide some valuable information to parents about the signs and more the warning signs of suicide, mental health concerns. Again, it's not to place judgment, it's just about to educate our community. One thing we were asked to do was do more in that area, so we thought we'd work with some of these outside providers to bring in, and they know it better than us, and they can really speak to the families in a tense evening about what the warning signs are and the systems of supports in place. As of right now, we have about 70 people registered. I think it's not bad for a Wednesday in August, right before school starts. I think we can do better and get better in the future, but for now, it's a step in the right direction. And this is one of the non-judgmental, it's really about just making families aware of some of the resources here in the community that are existing.
And you said there's 70 people?
Yeah, 70, yeah, 70 altogether is what we counted.
At the senior high?
Yeah, if it's senior high, Wednesday, doors open at 5:00 for vendors, at 6:00 is when the presentations start.
So you just go right in?
Oh, door doors, yes, sir.
Okay, Jared, anybody sign up for public comment?
No, sir.
Okay, IAEA, ASME, SGA, or STUKA, any representatives here tonight? No representatives there. You pretty well covered your superintendent's report, I believe, Mike?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, solicitor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one update. Something that always happens is, I want to say, kind of legislative pieces get snuck in and make changes to the school code, and they're not highlighted until after they're passed. So part of the budget, something that we caught a little late, is homeschool students are now able to actually go to the CTC. It's a change to the school code that allows for that. Now, if it creates a...
CTC?
The CTC.
ICTC.
Yeah, just Career Technology Center, yeah, any Career Technology, sorry, yeah, the ICTC. If it does create a burden or a transportation cost, something of that nature, then the parents actually have to transport. And that was a major issue that we had for the last couple of years, and why we had to deny in most cases because they were going and coming at different times. So that is something that I will use to get my term that kind of snuck in. But just if you do get those requests, that is something that's part of the new provisions of the school code. So I did want to update the board and any administrators in case you do get a request of that nature. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ron, there are no presentations. Keeping with our spirit of consent agenda, may I have a motion for approval of the minutes and the agenda for tonight? Moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion carries. There are no board reports this evening. I expect there'll be an ICTC meeting probably in August, so we'll be able to report some of that out in September. Tom, academic and extracurricular?
We had a brief meeting on the first. I'll jog through as quick as I can. Mike, fill in the blanks when I say something that's wrong or I skip too quick. Presentation on the skills pilot for the CKLA by the lead teachers. They're looking for a pilot to test this program in the elementary. Mike, was there a price cost on that yet?
There was, and... Keep going, I will find the course.
Well, Mike digs that out of the minutes. The committee, first off, the data looks really good on the Ben Franklin pre-pilot. This is going to expand the pilot and see how that data looks. We should have some information by winter and certainly by the end of next season, next summer. If it's successful, then the recommendation would be to expand it to the whole, across the board. We had benchmarking from the NCEE. Mike, what is that?
NCEE is the National Council, National Center on Education and Economy. It's a systems design benchmarking professional development series that we're going to go through on eight different sessions where we'll combine 40 different stakeholders from the community to look at our internal systems and how we educate kids, how we've been addressed, you know, some of the learning conditions and learning losses that had as a result of the COVID, and how we can improve our systems to meet the needs of all kids rather than kids modified meeting the needs of the system.
Total cost is $64,000, of which $40,000 is paid by the Department of Education and $24,000 by us.
Yes, sir.
The committee recommended that we approve that. We have this very actionable research proposal. I can't remember the...
Yes, we're working with Dr. Christy Krantz and Dr. Matt Nice. Dr. Matt Nice is a professor at IUP, and what we're trying to do is build some capacity and systems in the area of guidance, support services. She presented on that evening, and at this point, the board issued, or the committee issued their approval to go forward, continue to plan a sound, see what this looks like. So this is just memorializing that conversation from that night.
And as I recall, there's no cost to that project?
That's correct, no cost to districts.
We reviewed briefly the health and safety plan, and we have to be, we're supposed to review it every six months, so we had that review. The recommendation is to the board to re-approve it. PBIS, the T-shirts for staff and students, Mike?
Yes, we have a gracious anonymous donor who gave us over $20,000 for us to provide every staff and student with a T-shirt. What we're trying to do, building on a sense of community, and the front says Indiana, on the back it says we're better together. What we're trying to do is build a sense of community and sense of unity. As you know, at the high school last year, we had some issues that we wanted to overcome and we're working on, we're trying to get better. This is part of that recipe, how to improve that by creating a sense of a high culture of community. And thanks to that anonymous donor, we're able to do this, provide this for everyone. What I did maybe two or three weeks ago, sent out a survey to all of our staff and families. If you go to our website now, the first thing that pops up is a survey for parents to complete. At this point, I think we have over 1,700 responses. So we're well on our way, and maybe 270 in the area of staff. So we're well on our way to meeting that deadline. Only thing I'd urge is families to go and complete that, because if they don't by the 19th, I have to put the order in, and then I'm guessing, right? I'm guessing what sizes kids may wear, we've never even seen the kids. So that's where the family's encouragement and help is needed.
The donation is very unusual, and it goes directly to that.
Yeah, this family, this is the second donation we got. As you know, earlier, you approved some donations over at the elementary level, this one is for secondary. It goes beyond just the T-shirts, the guides, it's getting some materials, the guides, counselors are getting some materials, the nurses are getting a hearing machine, I believe. This anonymous donor provided. And yeah, so this person has been incredibly gracious and kind to our district. And when we presented the idea of the shirts, she was more than willing and to help out. So we're quite thankful, appreciative, sir.
Very good. And the committee recommended to move ahead with that. Mr. Zohorecek is going to PSBA conference. We recommended that he be allowed to do that. He's going to talk about us and all the wonderful things we've done in the last decade, or the last two weeks, not quite sure which. So the committee recommended we move with that. We have a Unity Week in Indiana County. Mark, Mike, do you want to talk about that?
Yes, again, as far as building community, because some of the issues and challenges we face aren't just regulated to the school, they're in the community. So Misty Nevo's leading initiative, where in October, they want to do Unity Week, where we just try to promote positive social skills and respect and kindness for all. And that's something we're working on. I just wanted permission to make sure that the board was aware of this work. It's about county leaders, community leaders, and the schools, and we're going to continue that partnership and continue to develop that out. What you're going to see at the elementary school, something like, I think there's a, and I may butcher this, but there's like a rock painting club in Indiana. So some elementary kids may paint rocks and encouraging words of kindness, et cetera. And we're just going to work on that and try to do a unity work and keep doing the things we're doing in the area of positive school-wide behavior interventions and supports.
Okay, and the committee recommended we proceed with that. The PCCD grants, I'm going to sum that up, that Indiana is to receive $141,000 for physical safety and $141,000 for mental health. This is to authorize the board, the administration to apply for the grants. It was a long discussion about what this would apply to. There's about $9 million that we can apply it to, some of which we've already committed to. So we're going to reach out and grab that money, and then Mike's going to come back and tell us what we're going to buy.
Sir.
Okay, student handbook, we looked at the student handbook, the redesign. And Mr. Johnson, Mr. Bowles have done an excellent job of making it friendly, it's electronic. We are still going to do a paper copy.
Yes, sir.
And some of the... There were some clarifications and corrections, but we wanted to move on, we wanted to move on. Right?
Yes, sir.
Enhanced core reading instruction, Mike?
Yes, ECRE is a multi-tiered program featuring a series of teaching routines designed to increase the efficiency and effectiveness of reading instruction in our elementary grades. This is a professional development session partnership that we are using, that's refunds to partner up with that organization. And at that point, the committee supported that. We'd like to have it memorialized in here this evening, sir.
Committee recommended that. Spring math adoption?
Yep, spring math is a tier-one intervention to help with build math fluency amongst our earliest learners. We had a pilot program at Ben Franklin, saw some success. We wanted to do a small pilot program, but the board has talked us into doing a much larger pilot program. So the funds that are requested are reflective of the board's desires, and we'd like to continue that use of evidence-based programming here in this room.
The committee has talked about moving math to a priority, much as we've done literature, and to get math into that same kind of pushing the limits, getting our math comprehension up and as we have concentrated the last few years on reading.
Absolutely. August 29th, we involve Dr. Paul Rickenmeyer out of Penn State. He's one of the state leads in math. We're going to top him, look at our data, and start planning that process here.
Perfect. And Mr. Dan Runge, the athletic director, came and talked to us a little bit about expanding, the potential of expanding junior high sports. There's a gap between what the community does and community sports. And in the junior high, there's some opportunity in softball, baseball, there was one other one.
Yeah, Dan's going to work on a survey, bring it back to academic committee, and we'd like to issue it here early fall.
Yeah, so the goal is to try to get these, keep these kids that are involved in sports in elementary also involved in junior high. And my particular ax to grind is to, we lose so many girls at that age group, that 12, 13 age group, where they stop playing altogether. And I was shocked, basketball had 65 girls trying out to play basketball in the last year. It's just impossible to accommodate 65 girls playing basketball. So there's, the girls want to do things, and we have to find them more. So we're trying to see how to do that, and this would be a partnership between the school and the community. So good luck, Mr. Runge. And we did support that further discussion.
Yes, sir.
He also brought Huddle to us, and we kind of bounced that back on him to ask if there was any possible to get... We were in favor of the Huddle format, things that they're doing, but we also were wondering if the community could provide some of the funds for that. He's going to look into that. And he brought the BSN Sports. And that would be extending the current contract.
To revise three years of BSN, yes, sir.
Yes, okay, and that's for closing, right?
Yep, it's our sideline store right now, they are our online closing provider. The good thing that the community knows is it does not preclude boosters or schools from doing their local sales through local agencies. This is specifically for those parents who may want to order just one item, or some alumna who may want to order just one item from the website. This allows us then not to have any inventory on hand or any costs associated with it, but helps promote school progress.
Okay, and then we talked a bit about Eisenhower and some of the pods, some spaces, some of the academic spaces in Eisenhower. And we'll feed those back to Terry's committee when the appropriate time. That's all?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, come to the meetings, and I don't have to do this. Okay, we got a bunch of motions relating to that. 5.2 through 5.14. Is there anything that needs to be pulled out? Anything, 5.2 to 5.14? Because I'm going to make one motion here. We good?
Go for it.
Second.
That's a motion, it's a motion and second.
Okay. Before I give my traditional questions, comments, or discussion, Mike did want to talk a little bit about the transportation schedule, because that was not discussed in detail at the committee, and it is at the beginning of school kind of critical. It might kind of explain what's going on.
Sure, Mr. Chavez here, our transportation director's here. I'll turn the floor over to him, I'll try to set the stage, and Mike, please correct me wherever I may make a mistake. The board has an opportunity here to add, to gain 15 to 20 minutes of additional instructional time a day by allocating buses to each specific school. Right now, we do, we share buses between schools, have a shuttle system. Under this proposal that Mike worked out, it buys us 15 to 20 additional instructional minutes a day. But each bus, each school is certainly allocated their own set of buses.
Each school itself?
Yes, so like there'd be a set of Ike buses, a set of East Pike, et cetera, et cetera, where we think it adds incredible value academically. And I think this is where you're going to have to be once Ike is off and running anyways. But there is something we have to make sure the board understands and they're aware of. And at this point, the only downside is if you're a family of three and you have one kid in a different school, one, they say Horseman and one East Pike, they could have different pickup times. And we want to be upfront with that, because we understand that that could be in inconvenience, but we're able to gain, again, 15 to 20 minutes additional instructional time.
So to be clear, what we currently do is we bump a bus from East Pike to Eisenhower and then send it off. So there's loading times and whatnot and transportation across town.
And there's shuttles, and I hate the shuttles.
Yeah, so we bounce kids back and forth.
Yeah, let Mike, Mr. Harvey, if you're okay with that, Mike, because I don't want to misspeak.
I was going to make it all up and have Mike correct it.
Okay.
So go ahead, Mike. Just start writing, no, no, this is what I think happened.
Just to clarify, this is a change to the elementary...
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Junior high, senior high still will be operating the same, they'll be combined, same times and everything like that. This is a change to the elementary schedules, what this, and what we're able to do, and I wanted to model this this summer to make sure it worked first before we suggested it to the academic committee and to our Director of Education, was we not adding any buses, we're not adding any drivers. This is using the existing routes that we have. We're just directing them to specific elementary schools, so they'll be providing service to one school only. Positives of it, it does give the schools more time, more educational time. Kids will be in the classroom longer, they do not have to dismiss early to get on a bus, to go take a bus to another school, to pick up another group of students. So I mean, that does allow for more time, instructional time, opportunity for, within the schools. Other positives, these are kids that will be with other, their counterparts in the school. They'll be riding with the kids within their school. So any behavior issues, anything going on, there's only one building that they have to deal with, they don't have to. There's not going to be any cross complaints or, you know, issues that may be dealing between the schools. These are students that are, you know, with other students that within their schools. So I think that will help in some of the things. Less time, less time on the bus, they'll be sitting there waiting for other students to come on as well, too. Will be able to load these kids at the end of the day and take them directly home. They'll be coming in, in time to, you know, at least on paper, they'll be coming in in time to, you know, get a breakfast or get into school before, a lot of time for them to adjust and get into the school and get into their setting and get into a learning mode. So that's, we're seeing the positives, we're seeing the positives on this. It'll create inconvenience for a few families that may have a student at a K3 building, a student at a 4 or 5 building, another student at a junior high or senior high. But looking at, I don't think the times are going to vary that much, maybe five, 10 minutes difference if they drop off time.
To be clear, that's almost 40 hours of additional, that's gaining almost another week of education for these kids. I think it's a huge, a huge, a huge bonus to us.
And to dovetail and emphasize what you said, Mike, about when we have the fourth Eisenhower fully operation as the combined fourth and fifth grade, this is kind of...
The model you're heading towards.
Yeah, this is where we're headed anyway, and we're sort of getting some of this, you know, set up for that day.
Okay.
Okay.
And we're not eliminating any routes, we're not eliminating stops.
No, no, stops, stops are going to remain the same, you know, routes remain the same. I did not want, I didn't want to go into this and have to add buses or add any expense in that respect. So we're at least able to use the existing buses that we have. It would have been nice if I would have been able to eliminate the bus here and there. The times construction would allow it, especially with Eisenhower being at a little bit of a different scheduled time because of their shared partnerships, shared facilities with the junior high school, so...
And you said, in general, it'll shorten some bus times, bus...
Yeah, generally it should, I mean, some of the kids might be running a little bit longer than they normally would, but we're still within the parameters that we've had for years as far as their ride time.
But you're eliminating the shuttle time. Yeah, we still got to go to the outskirts and show what's...
Yeah, it eliminates, it eliminates the idle time the kids are sitting on buses waiting for another group of kids to come out from another building, the ride time between buildings. So they're going to be getting on, they're going to be spending their time in the classroom, they'll be able to get themselves, get themselves ready to get on a bus, and they'll be going directly home rather than going to a shuttle point or something like that.
Okay, questions, comments, or discussion on any of the other items, 5.2 to 5.14? Nothing heard? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions carry. Cindy, you've got a long list, too. Policy and personnel.
My committee met tonight, and we, as the Policy and Personnel Committee, talked about policy and personnel. Those are items that we're going to be addressing on the agenda this evening, some hiring, some resignations, the first reading for two policies, some extra duty, extra pay assignments, and then the new handbook that will be coming out for the ideal students in our school. So... I, like Tom, would like to take this all as consent. So 6.2, 6.3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9. So 6.2 through 6.9. And anybody wants to pull something out? No? Yes?
6, 6, and 6, 7 are names.
Yeah, we'll need some names.
6, 6, and 6, 7 are names, and I'll, you want me to give the names? Okay. And then the press will be provided with copies. So 6.6 will be employing Melissa Teacher and Aleah Boyer as paraeducators. 6.7, Joseph Perkovich will be hired as an ELA teacher. Jamie Cortazzo will be employed as a library science teacher.
Hold up, hold up. I think you read them wrong.
Yeah, I apologize, I made a mistake, yep, I made a mistake. It's, Perkovich is the librarian, and Mr. Cortazzo is the ELA teacher, I apologize.
These got to be switched. So 6.7, Jamie Cortazzo will be employed as an ELA teacher, and Joseph Perkovich will be employed as a library science teacher.
And then you have behavioral health?
I had to turn the page. Nicholas Kroger will be employed as a behavioral and mental health coordinator, school psychologist. We will have Michelle Girardi employed as a long-term ESL teacher, a long-term ESL substitute teacher. And then the extra duty, extra pay assignments also have names. Do you want all those? We'll be hiring some fall coaches, some winter coaches, some spring coaches, and then a year-round position for an assistant van director. And all those names and salary numbers will be made available. Are we good?
Okay, anybody second? Okay, multiple seconds, questions, comments, discussion? Mike, anything you would like to add? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions carry. Terry, Buildings and Grounds?
No committee meeting report tonight. We do have a committee meeting next Monday night at 5:30. Update on Eisenhower Elementary, the architect and the committee and the administration have been working on a number of different things. We're very close to having the kitchen layout completed. They're still working on stormwater runoff due to the additions that are being put onto the building. We've seen a preliminary layout of the playground, and we've asked for some revisions to that. We briefly discussed landscaping and topics. We have looked at some classroom layouts, we've looked at special classrooms, layouts preliminarily. And we briefly discussed security and safety. So we'll continue to work on all aspects of the redesign. But again, it's moving forward, it's a slow and deliberate process when you're doing a project of this size. So, and then this morning, there was a group of us that toured the Lake Trobe Elementary School that was built in 2018. And just to look at what's worked, what hasn't worked for them, you know, we spent about three hours.
It's nice?
Yeah. Yep, got some ideas.
It's about the same size as we expect Eisenhower to be?
It's bigger.
It's almost twice the size.
It's about almost double. So I can move on to, can we take 7.3, 7.4 together? We good? I'd like to make the motion 7.3 for a security contract and 7.4 for a security agreement.
Okay.
Moved in second, questions, comments, discussion? Mike, anything you want to say or add to these two motions?
Yeah, quickly, they both have my full support. 7.3 is continuing the partnership to provide armed security at the junior high and senior high. 7.4 allows us to continue to work with Threat Prepartness Consultation Program, or Company, to provide some security advisement as we continue to navigate those waters as well. And they have my full support, we vetted them out, and we feel these are two organizations that allows us to continue our work.
Okay, any further questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Okay, motions carry. Julia, Lot and Finance?
Thank you. We did not have a meeting tonight, but we will have our next meeting on August 2nd. So tonight, we have three motions. I just love the 8.4, just so we know, it says let us give agreement, I think that's fine, so we can agree that. I think that's very clever, and it was very nice, this is a very nice donation from Carol Bush of a trombone and clarinet. I don't know if Mike or Jared want to add anything.
The only thing I'll say is regarding 8.4, I'm so grateful, a parent reached out to me, Mr. emailed, I never met her, but she was very kind, and she, and I'm paraphrasing, but she applied for a grant, didn't think she would got it, she got it, she's like, Mike, do you want this? I'm like, oh my goodness, yeah. She's very kind, I let Dawn talk with her and deal with her, but she was just so kind and gracious to think of us. And it fits within our curriculum, not only in science, but in our literacy program, there's a, I can't make this up, there's actual unit or lesson on lettuce and lettuce gram. So it fits kind of right with it, and Dawn jumped on board with it, and I should follow up with the parent who emailed me and thanked her, because it was very kind of her to think of us.
Yeah, they're nice motions, and then we have our approval fills.
Second.
Of 8.2, 8.3, and 8.4.
And it's already been seconded by Tom, so we're good to go.
He seconded it and I moved. These are the 8.3 and 8.4.
So any questions, comments, or discussion on these items? Nothing heard? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions carry. There's no discussion item, is there any public comment on agenda items tonight? Nothing seen or heard. We had some enclosures tonight, the Treasurers Report and junior high student activity. Ron, would you like to give the report on the executive session?
Sure, Mr. President. We spoke about the personnel hirings that were listed on the agenda here tonight. We spoke about the ASME contract update, we talked to our security and safety advisor or consultant, Mr. Petola, who gave us an... Mr. Petola, who gave us an update, safety and security, and talks about a legal dispute regarding residency.
Okay, thank you. Our next board meeting will be August 22nd at 7:00 PM. We do have an outreach committee next week at 5 o'clock. Buildings and grounds, transportation at 5:30, and then audit and finance at 5:30 on the 22nd. May I have a motion to adjourn? Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.